And now I'm gonna start the live stream. I will let you know. You're live.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Would everyone please rise and join us for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, again, thank you, everyone, for joining us. As I've mentioned before, on Tuesday and earlier tonight, we have returned to virtual meetings. We hope that this won't be for long, but it's a decision we're going to make, you know, as kind of a roll on a rolling basis, you know, we'll see what happens in January, but as of right now, you know, to be super cautious, we have decided to return to virtual meetings. If you wish to have a question answered by the board or the superintendent, please email it to us and we will address it either in writing or during the next meeting. You can find those email addresses on the district website. So please let the record reflect that all board members are present. And can I have a motion for the approval of minutes for the November 24th, 2020 planning session?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Taylor, personnel.
One second, Mr. Geller. I was on the wrong YouTube channel. I'm connecting. I apologize. May I have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Elizabeth Davis, Senior Office Assistant, effective January 4th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Hold on, Mr. Geller, one moment. Unless I misunderstood, Mr. Taylor, did you say 2020 or 2021?
I'm sorry, 2021.
I apologize for the interruption.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I may have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Kiri Zalaya, Building Aid, effective January 4th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I may have a motion for the approval of the leave of absence pursuant to the Federal Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act for Anita Diaz, Senior Account Clerk, effective December 8th, December 28th, 2020 to December 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the leave of absence pursuant to the Federal Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act for Patricia Plompin, Senior Office Assistant, effective December 15th, 2020 through December 18th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I have a motion for the approval of the substitute teachers as listed on your agenda with a change to the effective date for Angela Formosa to December 9th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I have a motion for the approval of the clubs and advisors for 2020, 2021 for the high school.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just one question. Mostly is gonna be the virtual clubs, right? Is that most of them?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the clubs and advisors for 2020, 2021 for Beach Street Middle School?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the clubs and advisors for 2020, 2021 for Udall Road Middle School?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the clubs and advisors for 2020, 2021 school year for Bayview Elementary School?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the clubs and advisors for 2020, 2021 district wide?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the clubs and advisors 2020, 2021 for Manitoc Elementary School?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And Mrs. Morrison will give the curriculum update.
Thank you, Mr. Geller. Our students and staff continue to work wonders in their respective classrooms despite the many challenges and disruptions presented by the COVID-19 virus. The ongoing feedback from parents and students is assisting us with making instructional and procedural adjustments deemed necessary for the best interest of the students during these times. I once again asking for parents to please make sure to reach out to your children's teacher and/or your building principal with any questions or concerns related to classroom or building procedures. Two matters at the high school that have recently identified as being in need of forethought and consideration are, number one, the attendance for quarantine students and how it is recorded in Infinite Campus while students await their test results. And the second matter is related to the timeframe that quarantine students have to take classroom assessments that are being administered during the quarantine period. Dr. Bridgman and the administrative team at the high school in conjunction with staff members will be working to address and resolve these matters over the next few weeks within the best interest of our students. Some updates from the building, uplifting learning and seasonal experiences continue to take place throughout the district thanks to our talented students, teachers, and administrators. At Udall, the Student Council Executive Board elections are taking place virtually tomorrow. Flipgrid videos were created by the candidates and will be shared with students and staff to watch during the advisory period at the start of the school day. I was fortunate to have the opportunity to take a sneak peek at those videos. In the videos, the candidates share their running platforms and what they will do for the school should they be elected. They really did a fantastic job, so good luck to all of the candidates. At Paul J. Baloo, the annual gratitude assembly recently took place virtually. Special guests were invited to virtually attend the assembly program where students shared heartfelt gratitude to loved ones for a variety of reasons. As quoted by Mrs. Pratt, "The students did an amazing job," and the virtual assembly was shared with all parents via Parent Square. At the high school, the World Language Honor Society students are in the process of creating personalized virtual holiday messages for the students in the life skills classes. The message will be virtually delivered before the upcoming holiday break. They include cards, singing their favorite holiday songs, and reading their favorite holiday stories. And at Okinok, students across the grade levels have been engaged in a myriad of STEM activities. Fourth grade students recently designed aerodynamic sleighs with popsicle sticks and masking tape for Santa's consideration for future sleigh designs. The fifth grade students constructed individual shelves for elves made with Play-Doh and popsicle sticks. One of the requirements for the shelf was that it could stand alone and support the weight of a paper elf without falling. And my personal favorite, Mrs. Velez's second grade class recently read How the Grinch Stole Christmas, followed by an interactive science experiment where they combined baking soda, vinegar, a balloon, and a water bottle to grow the Grinch's heart three times bigger than its actual size. It is important to note that the measurement unit for the experiment was Grinch's inches. As you can see, our students and staff are finding unique and creative ways to celebrate the holiday season and make learning fun. My best wishes to our school community for a happy and healthy 2021. Thank you, Mr. Geller.
Thank you, Mrs. Morrison. And Mr. Antonello will discuss the meeting of the Education Committee. You're muted, Mr. Antonello.
I'll try this without the microphone on. The Education Committee met on December 8th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Education Committee members present were myself, Mrs. Burns, Mrs. LaRosa, Mr. McCann, Mrs. Morrison, others in attendance, Mr. Campatello, Mr. Tussi, Mrs. Piladi, and Mr. Taylor. The first item discussed was the elementary math program review. This is the third year of the elementary level transition to the Dimensions Singapore Math Program. Currently, teachers in grades K through 4 utilize the Dimensions Math Program. Fifth grade teachers are currently utilizing the Go Math Program and are scheduled to transition to the Dimensions Program next year. In addition, three online math programs, Reflex Math, IXL, and ST Math are utilized to support acquisition of grade-level math skills and engage students in productive struggle. A review of the current math curriculum and programs utilized to support the standards is underway. Discussions will take place to ensure our current resources are able to assist teachers with providing effective student-centered instruction, challenging strong math students, and remediating those students in need of additional practice and support. Mr. Grover recently sent out a survey to all K through 5 teachers in regard to the aforementioned information and is in the process of establishing future meeting dates. Results of the review will determine if any adjustments may be necessary to support the continued advancement of our youngest mathematicians. Second item discussed was K through 2 Guided Readers Program to support students in small group literacy instruction in the classroom and to be prepared for virtual small group literacy instruction in the event that schools are required to go remote. At any point, we added an online K through 2 Guided Readers Program entitled Guided Readers to the district's instructional resources. This research-based program will allow for teachers to meet with small groups of students in the classroom while they maintain seated, socially distanced at their desks. The program will also be utilized to provide explicit small group literacy instruction to K through 2 students, remote should be K through 2 students, remote should the need arise. The program includes thousands of fiction and nonfiction books and text passages, cover a variety of interest areas for our youngest readers, and it's a data tracking component that provides snapshots of student progress in the areas of fluency, comprehension, sight word acquisition, phonics, and guided writing. The third item discussed was the high school and the remote learning schedule. The high school is in the process of finalizing a remote learning schedule. The need arises for schools to close for any period of time. The remote schedule adheres closely to the regular bell schedule and incorporates a teacher-student collaboration and support period at the end of the day. The remote schedule includes 36-minute periods and five minutes of transition time between each class. The last item discussed was the return of elementary students to the special area instructional spaces. This week, our elementary schools began to transition students back to the special area classrooms. On a rotating schedule, students will once again be receiving art, music, and MC instruction in those respective instructional spaces. The rotating schedule allows for sanitation of the classrooms between cohort usage. The meeting ended at 7:15.
Thank you, Mr. Antonello. Mr. McGinnis will discuss the meeting of the Finance Committee.
Thank you. The committee met on December 8th, 2020. Committee members present, Emory LaRosa, Peter McCann, and myself. Other board members in attendance, Steve Geller, Richard Antonello, Tom Campatello, and Anthony Tussi. Administrators present, Superintendent Burns, Lisa Piladi, Dawn Morrison, and Brian Taylor. The purpose of the meeting, as always, to review the warrants for the month and discuss pertinent fiscal matters. The meeting was called to order at 7:08. We reviewed the Treasurers' reports for the month of October for the school district funds and the extracurricular funds. They were presented and accepted by the committee. The payroll summary report for November presented and accepted by the committee. The financial statements for the month of October were presented and accepted by the committee. The internal claims audit report and the system manager audit trail for the month of November were presented and accepted by the committee. The payroll certification for November 13th and November 27th presented and accepted by the committee. The Finance Committee received and reviewed the warrants. We reviewed the following board agenda finance items. Approval of the budget transfers were presented and accepted by the committee for submission to the board. We discussed the approval of a Paul J. Baloo leasehold space agreement, 2020-2021 contract for Donna Gefner, Ph.D., approval of 2020-2021 health services contract with East Isle School District in amount of $3,838. There was one discussion item we discussed briefly, and it was covered in more detail at the Buildings and Grounds Committee, the use or potential use of the capital reserve. The balance of the capital reserve as of June 30th, 2020 was a little over $4 million. If we elect to use the reserve at any time, within the next school year, a separate proposition would be placed on the May ballot. No decisions were made. We just discussed the potential of using it. Meeting was adjourned at 7:12 PM.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. And Mr. McCann is next with the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to say happy Hanukkah to everyone out there. First night of Hanukkah and happy holidays. Can't believe they're here already, and we're doing well keeping all in school and together. Buildings and Grounds Committee met on Tuesday, the 8th, around 7:15 PM. All board members and committee members were in attendance. Administrators in attendance are Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Morrison, Mrs. Piladi, and Mr. Taylor. Items discussed were, we got an update from SCC, which is our contracting firm, on the bond work. Full update on where we are with all projects there with the bond, including the next level of bond projects that we would have as we have the remaining bond fund balance to spend. So we reviewed those. No decisions were made yet. We'll have some more discussion about that to make sure that we're spending the exact amount for the bond. As Mr. McGinnis mentioned, we discussed the Capital Reserve Fund and projects, potential projects there. So we garnished a list of all potential projects in the district that may need to be addressed on the Capital Reserve Fund. We're gonna discuss those. You know, we all kind of prioritize the ones that were safety and concerns first. So we'll discuss those in further sessions to ensure that we are putting up what we need to do appropriately. We, the seniors in the high school had recommended a paw print project for the graduating seniors. That's under consideration for the springtime to line the lion's path with paw prints for the outgoing seniors. We discussed the Montauk Highway fence along the library fields and the the bus circle there is in need of repair or replacement. So we're taking a look at potentially starting to look at options for that to keep the aesthetics and to make sure that fence is functional. It was brought to our attention with the rising number in the COVID cases district-wide and Long Island-wide, really, countrywide. We took a look at the permits that we have for outstanding organizations that are using our fields. It was the recommendation of Mrs. Burns agreed upon by the board that this time we're going to pause the permits for the outside groups on the fields just to mitigate any kind of spread that's out there. We've committed to looking at that in the beginning of the year. We'll keep them active, but not to be used until we approve them again. Look at them back January 1st. We'll look at the numbers to see what's out there. But our main priority is keeping the students safe, schools open, prevent the spread, all of the things that we, you know, that are professed on TV with the scientists and, you know, with the Department of Health. So till further notice, there'll be no permits issued for outside use of our facilities. We talked about there was additional exterior pole and building lights that have been upgraded to the LED by the maintenance crew for security facilities and increased cost efficiency. The last item we talked about was do the recommendation that the windows remain open in classrooms and offices, and that is really to present some flow of air through the building that which Department of Health recommends to decrease the spread. We realized that that may significantly increase electrical and natural gas costs this year to make everyone aware of that. The lack of air cool and weekend building activities may mitigate that cost, but something that we'll be watching. The meeting adjourned around 7:30, and that was the Buildings and Grounds.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Mr. Campatello will discuss the meeting of the Special Ed Committee.
Good evening, y'all. Special Ed Committee met on Wednesday at 08:30 in the morning. Members in attendance, Ms. Dowling, Ms. Doherty, Ms. Morrison, Mr. McGinnis, and myself. We reviewed all district placement of special ed students by building. We looked at the special education budget. The high-tech items on a budget seem to be nursing and out of placement for students who require a district replacement. All psych evals have been completed, and most importantly of all notes, Army-Navy Week. Go Navy, beat Army, watch the game on Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Campatello. And Mr. Tussi is next with the Safety Committee meeting.
Good evening, everybody. The Safety and Security meeting took place tonight at 6:30. Members present was myself, Tom Campatello, Bernadette Burns, Dawn Morrison, Elisa Piladi, Brian Taylor, Dr. Anthony Bridgman, Rihanna Fulton, Tim Haran, Jack Maniscalco, Dr. Dan Markwood, John Mullins, Andrew O'Farrell, Rhonda Pratt, Vanessa Williams, James Bossy, Sean McLeavy, Don Luteri, Joe Dixon, and Sean Wallace. Also present was Steve Geller and Pete McCann. So the first item was technology. The blue lights are close to launching. They've all been installed. All systems are tested, and we are just a few weeks from officially launching them. The cameras are going very well. There's been a new one installed, the high school guard booth. They are looking to install a second one on the opposite side to get a additional view of the cars exiting. The remote phone integration system, all rooms have a new digital phones which will dial out 911, which makes it extremely easy in the event of an emergency. As far as daily camera maintenance, security checks daily to ensure all cameras are in good working and proper conditions 24 hours a day. There's iPads are being used to use help with the digital incident reports. It is now making that system a little bit more fluid. As far as facilities, high school guard booth is fully operational again with cameras. There's also been a monitor installed to the booth. Door swipe access is on order, and that should be installed relatively soon for the booth. And at Manitoc Elementary School, a door swipe access has been requested to ensure safe social distancing. As far as item three, which was safety and security, there's a little bit of concern with traffic congestion. It has been noticed, and a plan is being adopted to alleviate the issue. Right now, they're working on getting more guards to help the situation. Security guard expectations. Sean is in the process of developing a set of consistent expectations in the event a new security guard has to be present at a alternate location. Sean also wants to increase the amount of safety and security training for all staff, covering all types of emergencies. As far as radio inventory and distribution, security officers have received new radios. Sean has had discussions with all building principals to discuss if more radios are needed or if some extra ones can be used elsewhere. He also wants to assess how many radios are issued and to who to ensure the proper use. And believe it or not, budget considerations are now being discussed already for the 2020-21 school year. The meeting ended approximately at 7:15 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi, and we'll go back to Mr. McCann for the Health and Wellness Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Geller. So the Health and Wellness Committee met virtually on Tuesday, November 17th. Members present were Mr. Haran, Mrs. Pratt, Mrs. Canestra, Mrs. Kerrigan, Mrs. Summers, Mr. Campatello, Mrs. Marshall, Mr. McKay, Mrs. Matioli, myself, and Mrs. Squados. We discussed our financial report. We also discussed the Color Run event, which was a great success. We did a kind of virtual Color Run event. Manitoc and Okinok, Okinok won the participation from the elementary schools, and they split the $150 prize. Pictures were posted at the event, and we sold accessories and t-shirts and raised some money for the group. So that was a big success despite not being able to do it in person. We are tentatively scheduling a cyber safety virtual presentation for January 20th at 8:00 PM. More to follow on that. We are putting together a newsletter. We're gathering various articles for the newsletter. Any input from the community would be welcome. Potential topics are social and emotional well-being during COVID, character education, book suggestions, benefits of playing outside during the pandemic, social host information, and other items. So any and all ideas are welcome. New and old business that we discussed. We, the committee, supported West Isle High School senior Dorian Squados, and he's promoting the Helping Hands Holiday 5K Run, which is actually this Saturday, the 12th. Unfortunately, the run had to be converted to a virtual run, but there is still a time to register for that, and that's at hashtag #holiday Helping Hands Holiday Run, either on Facebook or Instagram, to sign up for that event. Proceeds from that event go to help families that are struggling during COVID for the holidays. The committee presented a virtual COVID seminar on Tuesday, November 19th, at 7:00 PM. We had members of the Good Samaritan Team to share their thoughts on COVID and the pandemic. I attended. It was well-attended that evening and much appreciated. We are exploring some options as we are with everything virtual. We're exploring a virtual Bike-A-Thon for the spring, and also we're exploring the creation of what we're calling the Kick It COVID Challenge. We've tested West Isle High School senior Dorian Squados again to provide some feedback on that. We're looking to do kind of an ice bucket challenge within our community of how to get outside and do some activities during the COVID time. So we're gonna try to make it fun for the community, have everyone participate, post videos, more to come on that. We're also in looking at the potential of providing a speaker for virtual of also that same navigating through the pandemic. We, our annual West Isle Breast Cancer Promotion, which was done by the staff, raised over $1,830 for the West Isle Breast Cancer Coalition. So thanks for all the staff members who contributed to that. This brings our total contributions to that group to $41,790. Most appreciated as someone who has a spouse going through that. The West Isle Breast Cancer Coalition does wonderful things to help families in need as they go through those times. So that was a wonderful event by the staff. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January 5th, at 10:00 AM virtually, and I thank everyone again and have a happy holiday.
Thank you, Mr. McCann, and Mrs. Piladi will discuss financial matters and business items.
Thank you, and good evening. The Treasurer's Report for the month of October had a beginning balance of $55,988,292.81 and an ending balance of $43,744,622.39. May I have a motion for the approval of the budget transfers 3982 through 3997 to the General Fund and 3985 through 3996 for the Capital Fund?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the contract and agreements listed on the agenda for 2020-21.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Piladi. Okay, can I have a motion for the approval of the Winkler Real Estate Amendment Number 10 to Contract? So moved.
Second.
Discussion? So this is the contract with Winkler Real Estate for the buildings that are leased. It is Westbrook Elementary and Curtvee Elementary, and it is just an extension of the contract that we had in place with her all these years. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the approval of the revised fee structure with school construction consultants? So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the approval of the extension of the Can I have a motion for the approval of the extension of the leasehold space agreement with Eastern Suffolk Bosys?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And in addition to the agenda, can I have a motion for the approval of the amended notice of special district meeting?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. So this is just to change the notification of the date of the vote on the sale of Messera and essentially it is including the donation that the developer is making to the district. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Geller. Before I begin, I would like to reiterate something Mrs. Morrison mentioned in her update. We are regularly evaluating our practices, whether instructional in nature, attendance procedures, or of course, our safety initiatives. And the district protocol does provide for questions to be addressed with the teacher first and then the relevant director or principal. Most problems we find are resolved before they even leave the building. So I would encourage people to reach out to your teacher and principal. And for the most part, I think you'll be very pleased. This time last year, I was congratulating our football team on its outstanding season and encouraging you to attend our band and orchestra and chorus concerts district-wide. Unfortunately, we are not in that position this year, but our music teachers and student musicians continue to prepare for when they can perform publicly again. Additionally, we are hopeful that our athletic seasons can resume after the first of the year. But of course, we are carefully following the guidance from the state. Congratulations to our high school thespians who participated in Ten Ways to Survive Life in Quarantine. That's been posted on our high school webpage. If you have not seen it, I suggest you do so. As I shared with the teachers and advisors that had worked with the students, I literally laughed out loud. I think some of the assistant administrative assistants outside my office thought I was losing it for a bit there. And it's really a very point-on piece of work and it's really funny. So I encourage you to take a look. Despite the virtual presentation, it really was every bit as funny as anything you'd see on a live stage, which is not an easy feat. So bravo to all of our student performers. Earlier in the month, the district posted a survey to determine whether a sufficient number of parents would allow their children would be interesting or interested in allowing their children to participate in COVID testing. So you may recall that twenty percent of students and staff are required to test to avoid closing schools should the district or the community be designated a yellow zone. The results do demonstrate that enough parents are prepared to provide consent. Specific information about the process, should it be necessary, will be, specific information will be sent home next week either way, but hopefully we'll never have to use it. And finally, I would like to wish everyone a very joyous, festive and healthy holiday season and encourage you all to make good choices.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. So again, if anybody, any members of the public have any questions, please email them either to the board and or the superintendent. You can find our email addresses on the district website and we will either respond via email or at the next meeting.
And Mr. Geller, I do have two questions from a community member tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, both from Julie Canistra. The first asking about the results of the survey that we took of the parents regarding whether or not they would allow their children to be tested if we were a designated yellow zone. So I will give a little more specific information. We did receive responses from the parents of over twenty-two hundred students. So we have about forty-two hundred students in the district. The percentage of respondents who indicated their children, they would be willing to have their children test for COVID varied from forty-one percent at the elementary level to forty-eight percent at the middle school level to fifty-two percent at the high school level. And that is exactly what we would have expected. These results do suggest that should the district be required to test, we would have a sufficient number of participants. And if the results of school testing reveal that the positivity rate among the twenty percent that we do test is lower than the community's seven-day positivity rate, the testing of the school population would no longer be required. So we are putting a plan together in case we are tapped on the shoulder. I had the opportunity today, as did Mr. Haran, to visit East Islip, who conducted testing today and they will be conducting testing tomorrow. I've spoken with my colleagues that have conducted it in some of the other districts throughout Suffolk County. It seems to go very smoothly when it is carefully planned and we are in the position of doing that right now. The second question from Mrs. Canistra, there's been a lot of chatter in the community with regard to who is eligible to vote on the sale of the Messera property. Is it true that you have to have voted either in a school board election or budget vote within the past four years? And of course, I consulted with our school attorney, Mr. Vols. In order to vote, people have to be registered either through the county or the district's Board of Registration. People who have registered through the county but have not voted in the last four years are removed from the county registration list by the county. And as a result, that person would not be on the list that we receive from the county and therefore would not be able to vote. So anyone that is concerned, they should check with their county board of elections to confirm that they are on the county list as being registered to vote. And if you're not, you should re-register either with the county or with the district. And you can also register for the county online through the DMV, although I'm not sure how quickly that will be processed at this point. I would suspect that based on our presidential election, many more people are registered to vote than have been in the past. But if you have any doubt whatsoever, check with the county and they'll let you know whether you're registered.
Mrs. Burns, the Suffolk Board of Elections actually has a pretty easy to use feature on their website where you can check your registration. It asks, you know, for your name, obviously, and your birthdate. It's it's pretty simple, pretty basic information and it will actually give you your registration information if they have you in the system. And it actually appears pretty quickly, you know, from the time that you send in the forms.
That's the way to go.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Burns. So before we go, I, of course, want to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season. Please, everyone be safe and be well. And hopefully, we will be able to see you in person again soon. With that in mind, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session where the board will discuss personnel, negotiations and litigation?
A move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everybody.
Good night.